Good evening. Welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, August 12th at 6:00 P.M. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll now open the open forum portion of our meeting. Is there anyone here for open forum? Please come to the table and give your name and address, please.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Kendrick Francis. I live at 152 Old Plymouth Street, and I'm here to represent several of our neighbors in the area, including our bordering town Bridgewater, because we all share the same road. And the road is becoming very dangerous with speeding. I know that the police department is stretched out thin, but if we, I know in certain towns they have, you know, similar problems, and they put these nice-looking speed bumps there, and it's worked out great for them. I was wondering if we can have, we have a short stretch of road, but people use that as a shortcut, and they're going at top speed. I mean, I personally, I know I shouldn't do it, but in order to safely check my mailbox, I actually blocked the road with my vehicle just to check my mailbox, because it's straight out in my driveway. I'm trying to, you know, I've been in talks with the postmaster to see if we can get the, at least get the post's, our mailboxes on our side of the street, just like bordering Bridgewater has theirs on theirs. If we can get ours on ours, so that we can actually, you know, you don't have to worry about the gauntlet. You know, my wife and my daughter almost got hit several times, me myself. They don't, they refuse to check the mailbox at this point. Me, yeah, it's, it's, and my other neighbors are in a worse situation, because they were on the corner bend, so they're kind of like the same situation, so we just want to know if something can be done about that, because it's getting very, very dangerous.
Charlie?
I know we had looked at various issues to do with the, with Old Plymouth Street. As you mentioned, it's on the border between Bridgewater and East Bridgewater. It appears, based on the maps from Mass DOT, that both Roberts, which is the road next door to Old Plymouth, and Old Plymouth are listed as excluded for heavy commercial vehicles. There is some signage, but I know, depending on which way you're going, the signs may not be seen by somebody who's driving the truck. And I think what we need to be doing is working with the town of East Bridgewater, sorry, town of Bridgewater, to put up additional signage on both ends of the road for that aspect. That doesn't cover all the issues that you just mentioned, but that's one of the issues that was mentioned. The second is, the board could, I believe the speed limit on Old Plymouth Street is 35 miles an hour, at least, as posted. It, I believe, does meet the qualifications for thickly settled, so that we could, the board could designate as, that as a thickly settled road and have the posted speed limit. As long, it gets weird with MassDOT about signage, but you can put up a combination of a 30-mile per hour and thickly settled sign. Again, it doesn't prevent someone from speeding, which is why you also have been talking about putting in speed bumps or speed bumps. As you mentioned, some other communities in Massachusetts now have started to do that. MassDOT does allow for this. What I think the board needs to do is talk to John Haynes, who's the DPW director, because I think our feeling is that this isn't because the, it might not be a bad solution for Old Plymouth, but the minute we put them in, we will get a number of other requests for a number of other roads. Because, as you mentioned, it's not just other towns, but I think we have residents on almost every single street and road here in East Bridgewater that would say, on average, people are speeding, they're going above the speed limit. And so, I think working, the board could work with John to establish a policy about where we would put them, in terms of what qualifies. We wouldn't put them, for instance, on Plymouth Street, as an example. We don't have control over Bedford or North Bedford, because that's a state road. But shorter roads, roads with maybe less traffic, but a large number of people going over the speed limit, they might, that might qualify for speed bumps, but it's something that the board would want to talk to John about in terms of coming up with a policy, so that John, when John does get requests for X Street, or Y Street, or whatever, John can say, okay, I'm going to go through the qualifications, it either meets them, and we're going to, I'll put them in, or not. Obviously, there's also money to buy them, and then also, depending on how they're constructed, whether they're permanent ones and ones that aren't permanent, there's, you know, money that's to be spent, and then money has to be spent to maintain them. But it certainly is legally a possibility, but it's something I think the board needs to talk to John about before approving some sort of policy that John could follow.
Yeah, one of the things that I noticed, I, people keep on talking about speed bumps. I just read a few articles that other towns have what they call speed humps, which are a lot lower to the ground, they don't have that big going over type deal. They're, they're low, but they still serve that same purpose. Again, maybe something we can look at, you know, with John Haynes.
I think that's something, and going towards, like Hanson has something like that as well.
Right, correct.
Yeah, going towards the Waymouth way, yeah.
So, that's what we have to find out, what are the qualifications to create one, and then make sure we have signs up there. And I agree, we should be able to bring that speed limit down to 25 to begin with.
Or 30.
Can we bring it down to 25, or is 30?
There, it, I have to look at how we do that. There's ways of doing that, but.
Okay. Well, whichever we can do, we'll take a look at that. Again, we, we can't promise no one's going to exceed the speed limit.
No, I know.
But, you know, at least we'll get started. And as far as the mailbox, that is something you'd have to take up with the U.S. Postal Service.
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah, I figured that, yeah, I know, yeah. So, that's why I just want to let you know that I'm in the work, is to try to alleviate that in some degree, you know?
Okay. I don't know if the chief has any comments. I mean, you've got speed problems up the wazoo, it doesn't matter where, but Old Plymouth Street in particular.
Well, last little bit, there was some concern brought about Old Plymouth Street. We have some temporary speed signs up there, and we've been doing some traffic enforcement. But once again, we can only pick and choose based on manpower, and we have numerous locations on our list that we try to focus on, and that is one of them.
Okay. Okay, so we'll definitely look at, and.
And we'll continue this for the next meeting.
We'll continue that, so. When's our next meeting, September?
Ninth, I think.
Ninth.
Ninth, okay.
Come on back, and we'll, you should have some more information.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Thanks for coming in.
Does Rebecca have your contact info, in case anybody needs to get in touch with you? That would just be a good idea.
Anyone else for open forum?
Yeah, we bring her up.
Yeah. Mine up, Debbie.
Good afternoon. My name's Debbie Plato. I'm the general manager at the East Bridgewater Commercial Club. And just kind of inquiring, I had heard there was some new permits that had been.
Actually, they're old permits, in the sense of.
Old, well.
They're, they're, the permits, the permits have always existed, where in fact Rebecca and Lee have been working, and the board's going to approve a new set of permits, since it's more streamlined. But I wanted to make sure that you had an opportunity, because you're having a wonderful series of events this summer, and make sure that people knew about them. But at the same time, the board needs to go through the approval process, because obviously with the size of events you're having, we want to make sure that all the town departments are informed, that you've gotten all the permits you need, you know, in a sense of, I think you've been in contact with police and fire, so that they're informed, but we want to make sure, DPW, we want to make sure the police and fire are sort of double-checking to make sure that they're aware of it, the DPW, Board of Health, et cetera. Because I think it's great we have all the events happening, and we just want to make sure that everybody's safe when those events occur. And so, you know, when you, someone is going to have, you know, whether it's the commercial club itself, or someone's coming in to rent the property out for their own event, that they contact the Select Board office through you, and ensure that the, you know, the permits have come in, that the departments have been notified, if they have any questions, if they have any stipulations regarding to the event, that we get everything done before the event occurs.
In the appropriate timeframe. Okay. And is, is that something I'm able to view, or is that?
Well, in fact, we're going to, it's on the agenda tonight, is to update the event form, and once it's done, it's going to be posted up online.
And the Commercial Club is actually in the process of coming up with new applications for renters that rent out the venues for their specific events. There are some things, I think, that the board at the club would like to see added to them. So we are making efforts to do that as well.
They can work together on that, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So that's basic.
Yeah, I think the process is going to be much easier. Me and you sat down with that encyclopedia of information that we had to gather from the town side, so I think, talking to Rebecca today, I think you'll find that the form that we put together will be much, much easier.
A little more user-friendly.
Not just for you guys, but for anyone that's coming in.
Right.
So, at that point, I would say, you know, add, any of the questions that come on there, add them to your application, and that will help to get them a lot easier, right?
Streamline it all.
Yeah.
Wonderful. Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Anyone else for open forum? Okay, we'll close open forum. Building Commissioner, Patrick.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
How are you? Joe Show. Do you have a copy of the fee schedule? Yes. All right. This is pretty, hopefully it can be brief, this should be pretty simple.
Very brief.
All we're trying to do is bring us up to date with the fee schedule. We did a comparison with all the surrounding towns. We're about average now with the new, with the proposed fee schedule, it's about average with the surrounding towns. The other thing is, we had a lot of different types of permits that could all fall into just a couple of categories to make it easier. With our new online permitting software that we're moving towards, every, each one of those permits had to have its own layout. So to do that was very cumbersome. If we could shrink those down just to a couple of categories like we have here, that would really help out that. And it's just, like I said, it's just bringing us into the average with the rest of the surrounding communities.
Okay. Now, if we vote on these tonight, Patrick, we would put those into effect like October 1st, or something like that?
If we could, it would, it'd be, I don't think we'd be able to do it that soon. What I was hoping is, could we do it effective on the day we start the new permitting?
Which will be, whatever.
It should be a couple of months.
Okay. Okay, so we'll make the motion, we'll add it to, when your system is up and running, we'll affect it at that point.
That'd be perfect.
Okay.
It's actually in the.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
It's in the action item, that language.
Okay.
But the action item says accept a date of September 1st, so we're just not going to do it.
Or contingent upon your software.
Or contingent upon, yeah, yep.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Do you want to vote on that now, or do you want to?
Yeah.
Yes.
Motion.
I make a motion to amend the schedule of building electrical plumbing and gas fees accepted upon the new software going.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are all set?
Let's move it now.
Okay. Next up, one of the best things we have to do as a board here is to recognize people that have done outstanding work for the town of East Bridgewater and their capacities. First up, I'd like to see representatives from the Y come on up here. And Lauren, could you come up too?
You can sit there.
Yes, you can.
As we get started here, I'd like to recognize Joyce in the back. She is the Chief Strategy Innovative Officer for the YMCA, and Zach LeBlanc, who is the new Executive Director for the East Bridgewater YMCA. Again, the stronghold. Now, Lauren, if you could give us a little bit of a background on why we're here, and what these two great kids have done for us.
Yes, of course. So my two lifeguards here, Dylan and Lily, on a Sunday, saved a little boy's life at our pool, and acted upon an emergency, and were our trained, which were, they're trained to do, but.
It's, it's one of those things, hearing this story three or four times since it happened, I, I guess, Lathan, you've only been with the Y trained for about a month before this episode, which, which says an awful lot about the training that the Y gives these lifeguards. Everyone thinks they just sit around, walk around the pool, and have fun, but, you know, Dylan, you know, you showed us what it's all about, and I'm sure a lot of the other lifeguards at that pool are looking up to you and saying, this is what we should be doing. So you opened the door, I think, not only for the current people that are there, but for the future people that will be lifeguards at the Y, and any other place where they look for lifeguards. And Lily, I think you're still in high school?
Yeah.
I mean, that, that's absolutely incredible. If they have lifeguard training in the next Olympics, maybe we can get you a little Los Angeles for that. Chief, I think you want to add?
Thanks for having us. The Deputy Chief and I would just like to present you both a certificate for the great work you did that day.
This award is presented to you for your heroic actions while working as a lifeguard at the YMCA in East Bridgewater on July 7, 2024. Because of your attentiveness, quick assessment of the situation, and decisive actions, a young drowning victim was rescued. The department commands you and thanks you for your actions. We have one for Lily, and we also have one for Dylan.
I mean, these, eight, eight year olds.
Don't go away.
Not, not to be outdone by the chief and the deputy chief, but the Select Board. We're politicians, we always have to get our word in too, so.
You notice who's reading it.
We have certificate of commendation. On behalf of the town of East Bridgewater and its citizens, the Select Board wish to commend you for displaying dedication and courage during an emergency situation on July 7, 2024. These heroic actions, despite great risk to you, resulted in lifesaving efforts rendered to a citizen in distress, and it is our pleasure to recognize lifeguard Dylan Falsy?
Falsay.
Falsay, and Lilian, wait?
Wait, yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Remember those Olympics. Don't give up on them.
I don't think, the lifeguard at the Olympics doesn't really do much.
Lilian might be able to, you never know.
Pretty sure the Olympians, they're good.
One of our swimmers needed help right after her swim.
That's true.
Okay. Chief?
But wait, there's more.
There's more?
It's rating week, look at this crowd.
We also have a.
Rebecca, did you get a picture of the crowd through our webpage?
Okay. It's always like this.
Yes.
We had another lifesaver event that happened back on April 2nd. It was a Tuesday morning about 10, before 1:00 in the morning, dispatch received a 9-1 emergency call for a male party with hot issues that was unconscious, unresponsive. Sergeant Dennis Andre and Officer Matthew Montero were dispatched. Upon arrival, they found an unconscious and unresponsive male party that wasn't breathing. The officer began CPR and administered a shock feed to the AED. The male party began breathing, as EMS arrived and took over care and transported the male party. So, we're here tonight to commend two officers that saved the life of a party, and it just so happens that the male party that they saved the life of that night was also retired sergeant of our police department. So, I'd like to have Sergeant Dennis Andre and Officer Matt Montero up there, and I'll just read this certificate off to them as I present it to them. Sergeant Andre, Officer Montero. This award is presented to you for your heroic actions while working your assigned midnight shift on April 2, 2024. You responded to and addressed in East Bridgewater for a male party with a history of hot issues that was reported unconscious. Quickly recalling your training, you assessed the party, started CPR, using the AED to fibrillate him. Your rapid actions and the chain of survival ultimately helped save his life. We commend your actions and present you with this lifesaver award. Sergeant Andre, thank you. Officer Montero, thank you. Just, these officers are, they were awarded the lifesaver awards, just to give an idea. This is Sergeant, retired Sergeant Larry Davis from East Bridgewater.
Just, these officers are, they were awarded the lifesaver awards, just to give an idea. This is Sergeant, retired Sergeant Larry Davis from East Bridgewater. I'd like to commend Chief Jenkins for the team he's put together, and he had some incredible talent from his deputies, his, his officers, everyone of them that I've met in the last couple of years since he took over. Incredibly talented, and the town is very fortunate to have, have these guys representing them. And I, yeah, I'm just happy I'm here, and it's because of these guys.
We are too.
You know? I thank you for honoring that.
All right, can we grab a picture, or do you want to do it after?
Do it now.
Yeah, we got pictures. Yeah, we're here.
Larry's never shied away from a camera.
We have some other officers here that are, they want to come in as well, anybody.
The middle of these two birds.
Even the officers that, uh, would you like to come up, you're in uniform?
Not at all. So was me. That's good.
You're photobombing.
Oh, I thought you were going to get in the picture. I was like, really?
Charming. Who sent you wearing a red wig?
Peter, good to see you, buddy.
We're shaking hands.
How are you, young lady?
She just impacted her a lot. Thank you.
Thanks, honey.
We did have to go all the way up on this one, and get them the medals for their dress uniform, because they both have taken somebody's life before, and they have one they wear.
Thank you, Beth, letting us have the time.
Thank you.
Got that picture before they all left, right?
Thank you, thank you.
He's not there, he's great.
Thank you, guys. Be David, thank you. Thank you, thank you, guys.
Played in the tournament.
Lauren.
Oh, good.
Thank you, folks.
Thanks, Larry.
Thank you, Larry.
Charlie, a little late than ever. What can I say?
You still get credit.
It's good to see you, though.
Okay, moving on to action items.
Great. I make a motion to discuss and vote for Speedway Park, LLC. To grant an easement to the town of East Bridgewater for the purpose of installing, laying, constructing, maintaining, inspecting, repairing, removing, replacing, renewing, using, and operating underground sewer lines. It's a lot of verbs.
Yeah, last one. So, I'm going to do my own clap.
We did the slow clap for that.
You could second it on the way.
Oh, second, yeah. I'll second that for sure.
Peter, you want to talk more about it?
Yeah, just the easements. Nope, this last easement with the, with the Peyton family, they had a small portion of that line, so luckily for us, we were able to get in with Michael and get this, Jason, and get this done pretty quickly. So, I think we're signing this one tonight. I know they've signed and notarized it, and then we've got the daycare to sign as well, and now we can hopefully get it right over and submit it.
Yeah, Don's biting at, at the bit right now to get all those documents up to the feds.
All right, and I'll, we'll let Chris know too, because I think he still has to bring it to the, to get it.
Registry.
Registered, yeah. All right. That's it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, I make a motion to approve the transfer of common victoire license. Vaughn M. Inc. doing business as Speedway, Gallon Sweeney, manager, 203.
Subway.
Subway.
I said Speedway, didn't I?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Subway.
They're going to serve you quick, though.
203 Bedford Street, to Vergila Inc., DBA Subway, Karan Kumar Patel.
Kiran Kumar Patel.
Khan Kumar Patel, manager.
Second.
Tell us a little bit about yourself.
Yes, I'm Kiran Kumar Patel, and I have been with Subway from last 20 years, and I live in Bellingham, and I have five locations surrounding Bellingham, Franklin, Medway, Foxborough, and now East Bridgewater.
You save the best for last, I can tell.
Yes.
Okay.
So I would like to request to transfer the common victory license, and give me a good opportunity in this town, so.
And we, and we want to give you that opportunity.
Thank you so much.
Discussion?
Well, my husband's a frequent flyer there, he drives a school bus for Lucini, he gets his lunch from that Subway.
It's good.
Quite frequently.
Yeah.
I'm good, yeah.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're on your way. Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Good luck. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the July 15, 2024 Select Board's meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I make a motion to approve but not release the minutes of the July 15, 2024 Select Board Executive Session Meeting.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the July 25, 2024 Select Board's meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Do I have to abstain, because I wasn't here?
No.
For that one? No?
Yeah. You can't verify.
Can I still make the motion, though?
No.
Oh, I would draw the motion. I wasn't.
She wasn't here.
I wasn't at that meeting.
I understand that, but she's doing as approving what's written.
Right, but she doesn't.
But I don't know if it's factual, because I wasn't there.
We'll have to look into that, because before they said, yeah, anyone can make the motion.
I think if there were just two of us, right, then it would be that rule of necessity?
Right.
All right, move on.
Okay. Well, the next one is that meeting too, so, Peter, do you want to?
Peter, you'll have to do those two.
Approve the minutes of the July 25, 2024 Select Board's meeting.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pro, but not release the minutes of the July 25, 2024 Select Board Executive Session Meeting.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain. Okay, discuss and vote to set the date for a special town meeting.
Right, so the reason for the special, primary reason for the special town meeting is going to be that, give the townspeople an opportunity to vote on changes of the town zoning bylaws to bring the town into compliance with the MBTA Community Zoning, I think it is, or zoning communities, the new sections in Section 3A of Chapter 40A. What this does, what it would do is, then we rezone, sort of as an overlay district parts of East Bridgewater to allow for greater density in the number of units, housing units per acre. The planning board has been working on this, probably more, well, certainly more than a year now, in working on the language, and working on the zoning maps, and they need to have a special town meeting before the end of December. One in September or October, we're looking at various dates, would allow us, if something doesn't work out at that fall town meeting, would give us enough of an opportunity there if we wanted to, obviously, another special town meeting for a second vote, we'd be able to do that. Rebecca had heard from Kevin and Roy that they felt October 7 was the best date.
Okay.
The, we were also looking at September 16 or the 30, but they want that extra couple We were also looking at September 16th or the 30th, but they want that extra couple weeks to fine tune what they're working on. They have to, at the very least, they have to have a public hearing with notice before the town meeting, then they'll make a recommendation at town meeting. I don't know whether they're going to have a separate public forum along with a formal public hearing. That's up to them.
Okay.
I do want to say I appreciate the help that Old Colony Planning Council has already given to the planning board in this endeavor. They may be able to offer additional technical assistance as we go into the next few weeks of publicizing the proposals once they're fine tuned and ready to be given out and such. We may end up with other articles. We may have one or more union contracts, for instance, that are ready to be approved by the town. In addition, we may need to make some minor adjustments in various parts of the operating budget. But it should, but the main reason for this is going to be the MBTA community zoning articles.
Okay.
So would you like me to make a motion?
Make a motion?
That we set the date for special town meeting for October 7, 2024 at 7:00 PM? 7:00 PM? At the junior, senior high school auditorium.
Second.
Any further discussion?
If you could add to also open the warrant? Open the special time meeting warrant?
Amend the motion to also include opening the warrant for the special town meeting of October 7.
Second.
Do the schedule.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're gonna discuss and possibly vote on fencing for Strong's Field.
So this was where we have residential butters to strike, although we have baseballs that are flying into these properties. It's obviously a long term problem. It's not something that just happened last couple of months. We looked at various solutions, and the challenges are obviously to do it properly to prevent as many baseballs from flying into the other properties. In one way, you'd have to put netting at extreme height, which would cost hundreds of thousands of dollars to do, which we obviously don't have the money to do at this point. I know that John Haynes, John Shay, and Brian.
Brian Kylie.
All, you know, did some brainstorming about what, are there other ways of preventing the baseballs either instead of having a net 40 feet high, for instance? And they worked out more, it's going to be more a cage that obviously has an opening so that the balls can go where they're supposed to go. But if their balls are at an angle where they would fly into somebody's property right from the crack of the bat, so to speak, the balls would hit the cage area instead and not fly over. Now, it's not going to be perfect, but it should reduce by a great amount the problem we're encountering. The, it was 42,000 was the estimate. If we're going to do this project, it would require some sort, not necessarily formal bidding, but we'd have to get quotes and things like that, but the estimate's 42,000. We're, no one's asking today for the board to appropriate any money. We're going to get to ARPA in a minute or two also, and we may end up with some projects that are not ready to go. And we'll talk about that. And it may be at a future select board meeting, I'll come back to the board and ask for approval to use ARPA money for this project, as long as it's one, it's a viable qualification under the ARPA regulations. But I think it's, it's certainly worth a try, given the 42,000 versus hundreds of thousands of dollars and the potential for solving the problem, at least to the extent that it would be greatly reduced.
I think that's the important part of your statement, Charlie, is nothing's going to fix 100% this problem, but this is probably the best we can be able to get done based on everything involved. One thing I'd like to note on the proposal from Hawkeye Fence, the last note in the proposal may have to be changed a little bit.
There's a little bit of a typo in that last sentence.
Oh, no, I, I, yeah, I saw that. Remember that? I told you.
The FCC won't let us say that word on, on air.
That's right. Okay. All right, let's.
Do you want to vote on that?
Yeah, let's go for a vote.
I make a motion that we, are we, but are we approving the?
Concept.
The concept, because we're not approving any or funding any.
And you're suggesting to the departments that they look for funding sources.
Okay.
Because if, basically saying if you find a funding source, we're going to come back to us and we'll formally approve using that funding source.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve the proposal for fencing at Strong's Field pending a funding source.
Right, second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Draft ADA self-evaluation and transition plan completed.
We had gotten a best practices grant from the state a little less than a year ago to do this plan. When it, either hasn't been done ever for the town of East Bridgewater or its ancient history at this point. The, what it does is, and the work's been completed, at least putting a plan together, is that it reviews both our infrastructure and also our programs and services to try and determine whether we have any physical barriers, but also any procedural barriers to, that prevent individuals with disabilities of any number of different types from fully partaking of the town's services and use of its buildings and everything like that. We worked with the Collins Center on this, so they came out, they did, you know, onsite walkarounds of the buildings. They reviewed things like our website, policies and procedures and such. They've come up with a fairly extensive list of changes that could be made. Many of them don't cost a cent. Some of them, like the infrastructure, you know, we'll be talking about money. We'll have to integrate those in any sort of capital plan. It also does not require the town to do anything tomorrow or the next day or next week. You can spread out, especially the things that are going to cost money, you can spread those things out over a number of years. There's no expectation that everything's going to be done in six months or a year or something like that.
Okay.
What I wanted to bring to the board was the fact that the plan was complete. Our next step is I need to put it up on the town's website, publicize it, obviously, to gather public comments so that the public has a chance to take a look at it. And then I'll be, you know, once that segment is done, is to work on that to do list and say, okay, what can we be doing sooner rather than later? What things require some planning? What, you know, as I said, some things would need to be integrated into the capital plan. But to work with the various departments are making the changes that are necessary. It also, by having this done and completed, and we'll send a copy to the state, allows us to apply for a new best practices grant this fall, assuming, I believe, they're going to do another round of funding, and we can pick another topic under the best practices and move on that, too.
Great.
Yep.
Discussion and vote to establish the ADA commission.
So one of the things that's the easy, doesn't cost any money, is in fact that we need to have, to be in compliance, we need an ADA commission. I'm not saying to the board, okay, .5 people right now. Obviously, what we want to do is create the commission, and then we'll do a publicity release and say, people who are interested in serving on this, we welcome them to apply. And one of the, you know, I think one of the important functions actually is that we'll then have a group of people who will be able to monitor what we're doing, work with the departments with suggestions and ideas about implementing all these changes.
Great. All right, I make a motion to establish an ADA commission.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Should we put how many members we would like to see on this commission?
I'd say five at this point. If we get a slew of people, then the board can revisit this and increase. But I think three is too few, I think. And I don't know that we are going to get enough people for seven or nine, so I'd just go with five.
A minimum of five.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Discussion on ARPA funds.
So the federal government, as part of ARPA, has said that all funds have to be committed by December 31 of this year. We've had, obviously, a fair amount of time. In many cases, we've done that, everything from way back at the beginning when we bought a new ambulance, for instance, for the fire department. But time's running out. And some of our monies with Plymouth County, they have said that you need to have a commitment by the end of September. The feds have said even the town money needs to be committed by December 31. And by committed, they want contracts in hand so that they, you know, they can see this visible evidence that the town not only saying, well, we'd like this project and eventually we'll spend the money, no, they want an actual contract, whether for whatever the service is or whether if it's a piece of equipment or whatever. So the clock, we're now down to, what, four and a half months? And I, my plan is to come back to the board. I know we're not meeting at this point until September 9, but certainly by September 9, to be able to say to the board, I'm going to recommend that some projects be taken off the list that were previously approved. Obviously, I'm going to contact all the departments or the agencies or whoever else receives funding, but unless they show some sign that they're going to be, for Plymouth County, I mean, Plymouth County will grant us an extension, but obviously not by much, because they want to make sure that all their money doesn't go, you know, none of the money goes back to DC. And none of our money goes back to DC. So that they have to show that even if we don't have a contract in place, that the wheels are in motion to get a contract in place fairly quickly. And if we're not, then as we were talking about Strong's Field, that we may have other projects that would be innocent shovel ready or contract ready to go within the timeframe we're talking about.
Any idea, Charlie, on how many of the approved commitments we have, we have not done anything with so far?
I know there are several, but I have to go back and look. I mean, the pavilion, for instance, the board only had approved the design money, but I don't even think a dollar's been spent. I don't think a designer's been contracted with, let alone, and at this point, we would, we'd run out of time before a designer got the work done and we'd have a contract to build it. So I think, again, the board only approved the design money, but that's an example. The trail system, also, I think we had talked about making improvements on the trail system. Again, I think the people who had suggested the idea had, were great, but we don't have anybody actually pushing this along, and nothing's happened with it.
No, let me ask, if we do run into a situation, I mean, obviously, we've got a project now that we, as we're going to afford, 18, would we be able to shift money if we had to, if we're down to the last, you know?
Yes.
Two months before, okay. So we do have a way to get out of it, not lose anything if we had to.
And the electronic sign for out here?
If we can get the, you know, I think we, working with Brian and Rebecca, we can get the quotes necessary and do whatever other paperwork to certify before September 30.
Yeah, I'd like to see that get done.
Okay.
All right. Peaceful Meadows Ice Cream Inc. Assessor's Parcel ID 119-2. Determine the legal property lines of the parcel for reference in the deed. The survey of the property will need to be completed.
So the town meeting back in May approved acceptance of the donation of the parcel.
Right.
There were no, there were no caveats or anything saying, okay, we're going to need some money to do the acceptance process or anything like that. We've been very specific with individuals or entities that want to donate land to the town, giving them, you know, the very step by step process. And one of the things is, in fact, draw up the deed at your cost to then, you know, get the very signatures and get it filed, the registry deeds at your cost. The landlord, the attorney for the new landowner has said, has asked if the town would contribute to the funding of a survey for this parcel. I know in terms of talking with Chris Kenny, he felt that because the town said yes to a donation of the parcel without any caveats, that it would be difficult to make the case that we now should come up with money to do the survey. Okay, having said that, I'm running through the scenarios and say, okay, let's say the town says no. The landowner says, fine, I'm not going to pay any more taxes on the land. We eventually tax, take it through land of low value. It's a landlocked parcel, has relatively small amount of value. It could qualify for land of low value. If we ever wanted to convey it, we would need a survey. Why? Because the last description that was done was a couple of hundred years ago and mentions rocks and trees.
You have rocks and trees.
Because I went back and looked, because the deeds refer, you know, if you work it backwards, there's never a description. It goes back to a description in the early 1800s. So I agree with Chris that we went to town meetings recommending acceptance without, you know, without the current landowner saying, but I'm going to need some help on this. But I think if we, if we go through and we end up with it one way or the other, we're eventually going to have to do a survey of it if we ever want to convey it. But maybe we never do. And maybe if we start thinking of doing it, that's when we'll come up with our own money.
What's the cost for something like that?
Yeah, I was going to say.
That's my question.
Well, I think they have, I don't know. I'm sure it's thousands of dollars, because one thing is that they'll have to work, you know, start looking at the deed descriptions and look at the deed history for that property and the abutting properties, and then probably go out and do the physical survey, put marks, you know, or iron posts in or whatever else they have to do. So I'm sure it's in the thousands of dollars. He didn't, he didn't mention, you know, I'm making this up, this isn't the numbers, but he didn't say, you know, it's going to be $8,000. Can you pony up three or something like that?
But when we presented this at town meeting, we said this won't cost the town any money.
Right.
Now, if we pay for a survey, now it's costing some money.
I think we have to be very careful on setting the precedent on accepting donated land. I would say at this point, no, we're not going to.
And it isn't ours until the deed occurs. And so if we, if the town through the board says, sorry, we're not going to contribute to the survey money, it stays with the landowner until otherwise.
Right.
Okay.
So if it's okay with the board, I'll inform them.
I make a motion to approve outdoor table service and serve alcohol outdoors permanently at 34 Bedford Street Fiesta Mexican Restaurant.
Second.
Discussion? I think most places that did this during the pandemic are.
Yeah, so outdoor alcohol now does not have to go through the ABCC. It is now, can be approved by the select board.
Okay.
I think this is the only other, this is the last restaurant that has outdoor alcohol service. All the other ones.
That we haven't already.
Through the ABCC have been approved. But going forward, now, if someone wants to apply it, it just has to be approved by you.
Okay.
So how is it?
Of course, the planning board will.
So how is this different? Like when we, like when the villa does weddings, they have to come in, they have to get a special permit for every outdoor wedding. So how is that different than like this where this is, like now they're all set?
That's exactly the difference, that they're coming in, they've never.
So couldn't they do the same thing then?
Yes.
They just never have?
Right.
Okay. Oh, all right. Maybe somebody should tell them. I mean, I know it goes back to when we didn't allow outdoor alcohol service in town. This is sort of the one good thing of the.
I thought they had to do it because it was a, it was a, it's a.
A tent, a permanent structure.
Yeah.
It's outdoors, I think, means nothing covering it. I think that's.
As opposed to this where this is an actual structure?
Yeah, as opposed to, you know, you put up a tent every time you have to have.
Right.
Because usually where the decks and everything, they'll put a sign up on the stairs from the deck that says, no alcohol beyond this point.
Yeah, right. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Oh, sorry, yep. Aye.
Aye. Go get a margarita after the meeting. We can sit outside.
No, that's only in Halifax 30 years ago.
Oh, yeah.
We always went down to Hawaii Garden.
Oh.
Yeah. And see what happens.
Discussion and vote to waive insurance requirements for event permits.
And this is on a, not on a case by case basis. It's not waiving, why would you have insurance requirements, just waive it, period? This would give you the ability on.
Peter's already over there going, no, no, no.
All right.
On an event by event basis to waive them. I mean, you know, it's something that Rebecca and I have talked to Maya about, you know, there's a certain tension here or conflicting priorities. We want people to be able to use the town property. They've, you know, their taxes have supported the town in the mains of those properties or their avenue elsewhere that, because we want to encourage community, we want people to be together, to interact. At the same time, we don't want to be holding the short straw or being the deep pockets for every event either. So what we want, if possible, is for those entities to, that are going to be using the town property, to have their own insurance policies, whether it's general liability for their organization or whether it's an event specific, they can get an event specific policy instead. But some organizations are fairly loose. They're not as formal that, you know, it's a bunch of individuals. It's not a, you know, and they may not have the ability necessarily to get insurance at the limits that we want. Which, but now it comes back to the board to say to the board, is it worth it to the town, understanding that we may be taking on more of the liability if something occurs at that event, to have these, to waive those insurance limits?
Well, all of a sudden, it looks like that, you know, we haven't gotten this route before. And again, it's going to be that fine line. How do you keep on wanting people to use our property, especially the common, but then sitting there putting probably the onus on them to come up with a, a very large, you know, liability?
Mm-hmm.
And is that just for the people that are renting? Or is that for every, you know, vendor that's on the property at the same time?
Right.
And this is where I think this waiver has to come in. You have to be allowed to do, especially for people that may have already filed, you know, requests to use our property. I don't think we can do anything on that now. Like the Business Association, have they already filed for the paperwork for their events?
They probably have insurance. They did. With a lot of the event permits, the applicant doesn't really go into too much detail as to what their event entails. They'll say, oh, we're having an event, but then they don't let us know, like, all of these, you know, little events within the event that they're going to be having. And then we kind of, we see it out there. People mention it to us, and we're like, oh, wow, they didn't say that. We typically don't allow that type of a thing.
Right.
Which just raises a red flag.
Well, and that may be, I think that's part of the event, we're going to get to the event permit about.
Yes.
Like bouncing house, but.
Yeah.
But this will maybe too encourage people to be more forthcoming about what they're doing if they think, you know, you could have somebody, you know, tonight go out there with a birthday cake and have, you know, eight people cut up, cut up a birthday cake and eat it on the common, and they didn't file an event permit. They're just using it in a casual way.
But they didn't make a, but if somebody else. But they didn't make a resi, but if somebody else could be using it in space.
Right, somebody else could also be, so there is that kind of like, what defines an event.
Right. Well, I thought the events on the, let's just, now that we're talking about the common, were, they had to be for profit, you know, they're taking money in.
Well, and I think that's part of why we're talking about the waivers.
Right.
Is it maybe a non, not-for-profit event, or money, money may not be even exchanged in cans, people are doing something.
Well, yeah, but then again, you've got to be careful there, too, because they, even though it's a nonprofit, they're still taking in money, might still have some, so, it, I mean...
It depends on the organization. The Kiwanis is a nonprofit, but they have insurance.
Which is why, again...
Maybe if Coalition for Change might not have insurance.
Have to look at it by case-by-case.
Yes.
They probably don't.
Right. Like a group, like I could see, like, Community Coalition for Change, where this would help them, if they don't have insurance.
This is where...
Or if they've had to purchase it for that event, and that's a detriment to their efforts.
Right, and the last thing we want to do is send people somewhere else.
So, who's going to make the decision on a case-by-case?
You, please.
You pointed us, and I pointed you.
How do the event permits go on your agenda, and you approve them anyway, but this way...
They ask for a waiver, I wouldn't tell them, but if they say, look...
No, there's an option. There is, there'll be an option that they can check off, if they're requesting, and then that'll be like a separate vote.
And if they don't have insurance and they need it, then they should call.
Yeah, right. Well, you know, to be honest with you, there's, there's so many online now, I mean, there's a company, Thimble, that I was just talking to, you talked about the Business Association, and I talked to them last week, and I said, you know, you can go, you go right online now, and get a one-day, and you can even cancel it up to an hour before the event, if it rains, or something like that, yeah, so this...
Boy, that's changed a lot.
Oh, yeah, there's specific stuff that, you know, you can get, and it's, you know, it's pretty cost-friendly, if you want to call it that, you know.
Right. Depends on how, the size of the event.
That's, that's it, right. If it's a family, you know, gathering, let's say, of 30 or 40 people, that, you know, having a family reunion, they want to have it on the, on the common, you know, that's, yeah, fine, I could see that, you know.
Or like a wedding, or something, when we have weddings on the common.
Right, yeah, something that's, you know, not as much, yeah.
But even some of these, like businesses, we have to be very careful about, too. We don't want to turn them away, you know. Again, we'll have to look at individual applicants.
So, would you like a motion that we approve the option of waiving insurance requirements?
Right.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve the ability to waive insurance requirements for certain event permits.
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Discussion and vote on event policy permit application.
Oh, yeah. So, the event permit application.
I'd like the encyclopedia myself.
Yeah. I'm so sad.
Maybe that's why people haven't really been completing.
Not all those screens I have to go through.
I thought I was reading the Bible, you know, which done many moons. But, yeah, good job.
So, Lee kind of reviewed the permit and the application. We went from 19 pages to nine pages.
Awesome.
Which is huge. You know, the first page pretty much just tells you, in general, what requires an event permit, an application. And in general, it is any scheduled outdoor public gathering, regardless of size, involving the use of or having impact on public property, public facilities, parks, streets, sidewalks, rights away, vacant land, parking lots, or temporary use of private property. So, and then it just goes through the approval process. So, the first two pages are pretty much for, first three pages are for reading, you know, kind of tells you why we're asking these things. And then there's a checklist, which is kind of good for the event either way, so they can, oh, these are the things I'm going to need, so, you know. But, yeah, it's, me and Charlie looked it over, and it looks great.
I think there's one typo on page four, for amplified music, it says, use the amplified music, I think you mean you...
Oh, use of.
Of amplified music there.
Yeah, so if you approve this, we can get it on...
I think it's great.
The website, we can do a fillable form, so it can be easily, easily completed, and they can just email it back to us, whatever's easier. But it says, you know, language, you know, says, please be specific and describe, you know, your event.
What would be used in barrels for?
DBW? Trash, maybe?
Okay.
Block off?
Light a fire, or trash.
Sorry.
Are you hands over?
Would you rather it say, trash containers?
Yeah, something like that.
Okay.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the event permit, as presented.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Just one more thing I just want to add.
You can't like, either.
So, we do have the, the option to waive the insurance requirements, but you also have, and I, we've always, always had an indemnification form, but right now, what is included in it is an indemnification and hold harmless agreement form. So, if you do waive the insurance, at least we have the...
They have to submit that. Discussion and sign the state primary warrant.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye. I make a motion to appoint Melissa Blood to the Patriotic Activities Committee, effective August 12th, 2024 to June 30th, 2027, for a three-year term.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have any other, for any other boards?
We've received a few applications, other commissions and things like that have gotten applications, so they're in the process of contacting the applicant, and kind of having them come and express their interest.
What I'd like to see for any of these, that we, we appoint any of these commissions, you know, boards, committees, I'd like to see them in front of us when we approve it, you know, just so we know who they are, and...
Paul did send an email on...
We do let the applicant know that, you know, it's not mandatory, we can make it mandatory, we say it's not mandatory, but we would like you to, you know, come.
Yeah, something like that, you know.
That's what we say, so, maybe they're just camera shy.
Maybe we'll make it a little harsher, then.
We must come.
I make a motion to appoint Norm McCallahan to the Historical Commission, effective August 12th, 2024, through June 30th, 2027, for a three-year term.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you both for joining us.
I make a motion...
You'll never regret it.
Well, Norm is coming back, that was, that was, I did speak to the chairman of the Historic Commission, and he was in favor that I have to. It's polite conversation, while we eat corn on the cob. I make a motion...
Way too much information.
To vote to finalize the agreement with Little Discoveries LLC, 125 Highland Street, in a graduating agreement and easement related to the sewer line construction.
Second.
Of what we did at the beginning.
Peter?
Talked about it earlier, last, one of the two, we had already come up with a, an agreement with Little Discoveries, we just had to change some of the paperwork around, but Rebecca said they showed up today, got notarized, and we are done.
Great.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye and yea.
And that is it for our lengthy list of action items.
Charlie, town administrator?
Yeah, just that one thing, identifying farmland of local importance. This is a federal program that helps protect farmland, not just ones that are in Chapter 61A, but in the sense of that what they really are looking at is soils, and saying, even if that isn't being used as farmland right now, that it might be prime farm land if someone, in fact, wanted to use it as such, and to work on preserving that land for future agricultural use. It doesn't change zoning, or anything like that, but I wanted to bring it to the board's attention, so that, you know, East Bridgewater can participate in this program.
Great.
And that's it, that's it.
Discussions, Carol?
I'm good.
Peter?
I'm going to refrain from discussing anything at this point in time, because we talked about a meeting I went to the...
Okay, yeah, that's good.
Be here for three days.
I would encourage people to go watch that meeting.
A hundred percent.
Zoning Board of Appeals from August 7th, 2024. I would encourage people to watch that meeting for some information on understanding...
Yeah, clarification.
The project, and...
Yeah, I thought that...
Peter, I thought what you said was, was very good, and I think that the thoughts of your neighbors will be interesting for people to hear.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just, if we could just ask people if they're doing that, to, one day with an open mind, and listen to what people are saying, you know, your thoughts that you had going into, you know, they could be changed if you listen.
Yep.
You know, if not, then...
Education's the best way to make a good decision than anything. And I thought, Charlie, I don't know the woman's name, was that...
Lynn Sweet.
Great job.
She did a really terrific job.
Very down-to...
And she was in a difficult position.
Mm-hmm.
She handled everything with, with a lot of calm demeanor, and diffusing situations where tension kind of came up, she really handled it very well.
Yeah, I believe, I think so.
Fudos to her.
Yeah, well, I'm glad, you know, I'm happy, obviously, that, you know, mass housing has, we're not getting the money, we're getting people, but having someone with the technical expertise about Chapter 40B projects and such, and working with the ZBA to make sure that they follow the procedure correctly, so that whatever the decision that they make, it's done in a proper manner.
Right. And the only one point I would say is, look, you know, this, and she made a mention of it, it's a friendly 40B, and, you know, that doesn't really resonate with a lot of people, like, what's the difference between a friendly and a non-friendly, if there's something on that factor?
Big difference.
Yeah, and the fact is, is that we're working with the project, and have the ability to do some alterations to the, to the whole thing, and they'll listen to what, I have to say, we've been working, Rob and his team, who is the control of the project for, geez, probably two and a half, three years now. So, you know, I think they have their interest, of course, but also the town's interest and mine, as we continue to negotiate them, because we need them as much as they, they need us, for sure, for a lot of different reasons. And I think it just needs to be made aware, before, you know, we, we start to talk about things that are completely false, you know. I'll end there.
Okay. Just before we move on, are we going into executive session?
Just very briefly, I have a couple of items.
Okay. Just a couple of things. What I want people to, to remember about tonight is, you know, we had, you know, some people from Hawaii, you know, did a great job saving a young individual's life, and we've had, you know, our police force, you know, saving, you know, the life of a retired sergeant for the, these are just great, great stories. And I'm hoping two things happen here. One is that I hope people in the town that have other stories like this, good stories, good things that are happening in our town, they bring that to our attention, so we can get these on camera.
Yeah.
And the second thing is, I hope for all the naysayers out there, that have nothing good to say on all their social media accounts, because they have nothing else to do, that they pass things like this along, about what the town does, and the people we have in this town, and maybe that could just change some of the atmosphere out there. But I will say, go ahead, Madam, bring us in, too.
I make a motion to close open meeting and enter executive session, and not return to open session, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, building commissioners, zoning enforcement officers, director of assessing, IT director, town accountant, town administrator, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair, so declares firefighter, superior officers, clerical, DPW dispatcher, superior officers, patrol officers, library, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A9, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, as the town chair has determined that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position in a matter involving town of East Bridgewater versus Ritter Farm. Vote to close executive session, and, no, we're not doing that. Forget that, strike that.
We will not be coming back.
We will not be coming back. Carol Julius, aye.
Peter Spagone, aye.
David Chee, aye. Thank you, see you after Labor Day, have a great rest of your summer.